Thank you so much, appreciate that. We're gonna jump, like I mentioned a little bit earlier, we do have a busy meeting, so we're just gonna go ahead and press on. Uh, the first section that we have is citizens to be heard. Uh, let's see, like, sure, okay. Okay, so, input. No item agenda, I guess they're just, okay. So, uh, this is the opportunity for citizens, visitors, and guests to address the city council for any issue or any item on the agenda in compliance with LGC Section 551.007. City council may not discuss any presented issue, nor may any action be taken on any issue at this time. Citizens to be heard are limited to three minutes each. Attorney General Opinion JC-0169. Do we have, we don't have anybody signed up, but I still wanna go ahead and ask, anybody would like to bring up some comments to be heard? Okay, go once, anybody who'd like to bring any comments? Okay, twice. Lynette, if you can go ahead and show us on there. No comments presented. No sense of concern. Okay, uh, we're gonna go ahead and press on, but we're gonna go ahead and go out of order. Uh, uh, we're gonna go ahead and take care of part of number eight of the executive session, and this is due to the availability of council. So, we're gonna go into-
Executive session, this is the city council, city of Lidl may convene in executive session in accordance to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071A and II, consultation with the attorney to discuss and consider the following item. So, we're gonna go into B now, based on the availability of one of our attorneys, and that's, uh, B, the employee complaints filed against the city administrator. So, we're gonna go ahead and close our regular meeting right now, and this is at 6:32, and council, if we can please convene and back, I'd appreciate it. And Jessica, if you can join us.
Go ahead and- Show us coming back at 7:01 PM, and no action taken. Okay? We'll be able to do that. All right, council, we're gonna go ahead and move on to number five. This is a consent of the agenda, consider the approval of the minutes, first taking a look at March the 13th, 2023.
On announcements, it's not a big deal, but number nine should be seniors plural, not senior, seniors singular. Seniors will get together.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 13th as submitted.
Okay, got a motion on the floor for us to go ahead and approve, uh, March 13th meeting?
With the amendment suggested.
With the amendment? Okay. Got a second? Any further discussion?
A second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to next set of meetings for the, or minutes, which is the 27th of March.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for March the 27th.
Okay, got a motion for us to approve the minutes for the 27th? Got a second, Sam? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you so much. And let's go ahead and move on to B, consider the approval of payment of bills, and Lynette actually provided that in front of you. I've got a spreadsheet. Take a look at that.
Lynette, what's this last line? This controls the public accounts.
That's why I'm saying something has to pay back, so we owe a percentage of the time to the state of Texas for fines collected.
Is that quarterly, or?
It's a quarterly, yes, sir. And that's about average what's going in, but remember, our tickets have tripled in the amount, so it's a little bit higher than it was in the last year since we've paid.
So, that's their cut, huh?
Yes, sir.
They're doing what, though?
Working hard, sir, working hard.
Just breathing, huh?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we, uh, pay the bills as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for us to pay the bills as submitted?
No second.
Okay, got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much, appreciate that. Let's go ahead and move on to item number six, the open session, take action on, on items discussed. The first one is A, is consider an act upon presentation and approval of the city annual audit for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. How are we doing, Debbie?
I'm great.
Good, good. Thank you. You should have in front of you, uh, she placed, uh, so you should have the letter and the report, the financial report in front of you that we're gonna use for presentation.
And I believe you received it in your packet, the agenda packet when it went out. Obviously not a hard copy, but. I am Debbie Fraser, I'm from Armstrong Vaughn and Associates, and we performed the September 30th, 2022 audit, and I would like to tell you that after adjustments, your financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct, and that's basically what our opinion says on page one. If you'd like to turn to page 14 and 15, I believe, I'm sorry, 13. In the book, I'm sorry, not in the letter. So, this is your statement of net position, and this is typically not how you see your financial statements. Um, you'll, this is full accrual, so you see your capital assets, you see your, um, long-term debt, your pension liabilities, as well as your other post-employment benefit liabilities, and, uh, compensated absences. You don't see those typically on your modified accrual balance sheet. So, at the end of the year, you actually had 22 million, 22.2 million in, um, total assets, of that 11.1 million was cash and cash equivalents, and if you'll notice, your, um, business-type activities had nine and a half million dollars in it, and that's basically primarily because of your, um, bond. You had a deferred pension, OPEB-related outflows of 136,715. This is generally the bulk of it, is your, um, pension or TMRS payments that you make from Oc-, I'm sorry, uh, January 1 through September 30th, because they, of the current year, because TMRS does their report on the calendar year. The, um, total liabilities are 10.6 million, and the bulk of that, nine, nine points, almost 9.7 million is long-term debt, and that's your, um, two bonds that you have outstanding. You did do a refunding bond, um, this past year for a million, and then you had the eight, eight and a half million dollar, um, bond also. Your deferred inflows are 297,789. This is primarily the interest earned on your, um, TMRS, uh, investments, which you guys don't ever see, it's just a report that's put out one time per year. So, at the end, you had, um, total net position of 11.4 million, and of that, eight, almost 8.7 million is net investment in capital assets, which is your capital assets minus any debt associated with those capital assets, and then 1 million, 1.1 million is restricted. If you turn to page 16, this is basically, um, what you see on your budget. So, you're, um, you know, you, it's kind of the modified accrual, you see no compensated absences, capital assets, pensions, or, um, long-term debt. So, you had, uh, 2,87360 in your governmental funds. Um, this is your general fund, and then everything except your proprietary funds. Of that, one and a half, almost 1,563,000 is, um, cash and cash equivalents. Your liabilities were 314,789. Your unavailable property tax revenue was 99,720. That's basically the property tax that hasn't been collected over the lifetime of property tax, um, for the city of Lidl. Then you have one, uh, fund balance of 1,672,851. Of that, your unassigned fund balance is 1,279,000, which is approximately three months of your operating expenditures for the following year. If you'll turn back to page 47, this is your scheduled revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance, budget to actual. And I just want, um, to go over, this is primarily how you budget, so, um, when you're doing your monthly financial statements and comparing budget to actual, um, this is typically what, kind of what you'll see. Your total revenues were 3,484,650 budgeted, and you actually brought in 3,537,197. Um, so you had a positive variance of 52,547. You did have your ad lorm taxes, you guys kind of do it a little differently, which I'm hoping will be changed next year. You budget for all of your property taxes, and debt should really be recorded in your, um, debt service fund, uh, not as a transfer in, but as actual ad lorm, and that's how we've transferred it over. Your expenditures were 3,421,650, and you actually spent 3,517,000. You had a unfavorable variance of 95,854. That leaves you with, uh, excess, I'm sorry, excess revenues of almost 20,000. You had some transfers in and transfers out that amounted to about 19,421. So, your total net change in fund balance was 39,000, you had budgeted for a thousand dollars, so you had a positive variance of 38,114 dollars. If you turn to page 49 and 50, this is your schedule of changes for your net pension liability and related ratios. I, I just wanna point out, um, something that's very positive. Texas municipal retirement system, which you pay in monthly for your employees' pension, um, you are actually funded 97.4%. The GFOA recommends that you be funded over 70%, so you're very well-funded, and if you go halfway up the page, you'll see the primary reason for this is your net investment income was 531,188. If you turn to page 51 and 52, um, basically 52 is your supplemental death benefit, and this unfortunately will go up every year based on, um, your retirees who have left the system. They get paid 7,500 dollars, um, if there's debt, um, once they've left the city's employment. So, your covered payroll was 1.3 million, and your actual ending liability was 56,200, so your, um, percent payroll was 4.15%. I wasn't gonna go over anything else in the report unless you have some questions that you'd like to ask.
You're still gonna go to the letter of reference?
Again, if you have any questions that you find later on, my number is, um, on the opinion letter, which is on page one, and, um, you're welcome to call me with any questions. On page one, of the communication with those charged with governance, um, the first, the first part of, uh, the letter just tells our, our responsibilities for the audit. We did, we had planned on, um, doing this earlier, but we had some scheduling conflicts, um, with management, and then a little delay with, um, some of the information. But we still, I mean, completed your report before the allocated, or the SEC information was due.
And council, just so you know, so this, if you remember, they helped us out, we were able to get back the three years that we were behind, and now this one was the year that we came close to being right at the time, well, we did come in the time, so this is a huge thing for us, we are now on schedule, so we appreciate your help there, you giving us, giving us-
Thank you. This year, we had, um, a significant accounting policy change, uh, for leases, and so it was, uh, leases are accounted for, um, differently, um, from here on out, um, but we didn't, we analyzed your contracts and found no real operating leases that we needed to make at capitalist. Um, significant accounting estimates, we had useful lives of depreciation, allowance for uncollectible property tax and utilities, and then the mortality rate, investment returns, discounts, healthcare cost trends, and other, um, conditions related to the pension and the supplemental death benefit. On page three, we did have an uncorrected misstatement between 21 and 22, and that was for 56,267, and it was declared some of the other liabilities. This, we just have to tell you because it was above trivial, and, um, it really has no material effect on your financial statements. We did have, um, several adjustments, corrections to inter-fund activity, issuance of bonds payable, corrections to beginning fund balances, and then other liabilities. And then, um, we do, we did have some comments, um, which are listed on page four. So, um, cash accounts, bank recs, and stale checks, and I'm gonna combine this with another one that we've written further on down the line. You guys have an excess of 20 accounts, which is a large amount of bank accounts that you have to reconcile each month. It would be much better if you took those accounts and combined the majority of them, except for your debt, um, and capital projects into one account, and then recognize this information through fund accounting, um, and restrictions rather than these 20 bank accounts that you get. The other thing is, you want it to separate in separate funds, and I don't mean, um, bank accounts, I mean actual funds in the accounting system, your PEG, your hotel occupancy, and your court technology. That would be much more beneficial that you re, that, and you would see, um, the activity if they were separated into funds. But of these 20 accounts, they're all with, um, the, a local bank, and they're not receiving very much, um, interest. And so, uh, textbook logic and, um, I have to turn the page, can't think of the other one. Currently are text class, they're currently earning 4.5%, 4.6, and then, um, 4.9 to 5 on logic, and those are, um, currently your accounts at Lidl State Bank are making like point, less than 1%, so, um, you know, you really need to look into that.
And council, just so you know, this was something that came up before in an audit, but one of the reasons that we kind of kept things the way they were going is just because we were still trying to match things up and track things from different places, so, uh, after we get done with this audit, now we're in a position, our experts gives a precision of being able to get us to that next level, so we definitely will address that, and thank you for, for the feedback on that.
The next item is vacation hours. I do want to say that this has been taken care of, uh, but in the past, employees were allowed to roll forward vacation in excess of the written policy, since it occurred, um, in December 2021. I have to continue, um, to write you up, but I can tell you in December 22, it was corrected. Computer policy, you still don't have written policies and procedures in place, uh, to address security and access controls to the computer system. Our understanding is that you are currently working on these, and, um, they will be accomplished this year. The donations for the volunteer fire department, currently each month during the utility being processes, donations are collected for volunteer fire department. Um, so you run it through your general ledger, and, um, you're still putting in an account that is for utility funds, we're asking you to change it to another account as it comes in, and then pay it out, um, on a routine basis. Credit credit accounts, I think you all are aware of this one, you have Capital One Walmart card, it's guaranteed for city purposes, and used for city purposes. Current management does not have access to these accounts, um, now that your city secretary is no longer here. The city was unaware and unable to use points, or unaware, and they are not unable to use the points on this card, which currently had accumulated by 53,312, or 533.12 cents. We couldn't confirm that prior usage of points, uh, to the credit card was, or how they were used. We're just asking you that you set up a credit card, um, through probably a state-backed agency, I gave, um, Lynette some information, and so hopefully you guys can get that done. Currently, I think you're using debit cards, which the liability on debit cards are much greater than a credit card. A debit card, you know, I could take your cred-, uh, debit card and go over and, um, charge up or withdraw cash, um, for a larger amount, and not, you wouldn't get that money back, basically. On a credit card, if somebody fraudulent charged, you would be able to at least file a claim to try to get that back.
And council, just so you know, that was what we had to do at the point, because our previous employee had party accounts or had to counsel the name, so we had to come up with a solution for us to be able to kind of keep the city operational, and that was the easiest and the quickest way to be able to do that, so.
That was with the debit card. Now, we're gonna switch over to credit card.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we had to, had to keep the city going in some way.
We'll have to take you to the middle on that. Matt actually had a conversation with them, she went, went to the back last week and talked to them.
Thank you, Debbie.
Payroll tax, you guys had overpaid payroll tax for 26,236. It's not really a big deal, we just thought we should, um, let you know, because that 26,000 could have been paid, used to pay for something else while you were waiting for the refund, you have received the refund. Pledge collateral, you, um, you weren't getting, or we could find no evidence that you were getting collateral, um, from the bank on a monthly basis, um, sent over, so we contacted the bank, they kind of had a hard time finding it. So, we just think you need to make sure that you have the pledge collateral sent to you monthly, and ensure that you have a current depository agreement, because if your depository agreement is expired, the collateral pledged does not have to be, um, paid. If you are, you know, the, the third party, which is not, um, Lidl State Bank, but whomever, which in your case, I believe it was Security Service-
Frost.
Oh, Frost, I'm sorry, Security Services, no, it's in, um, would have to be paid, or would not have to be paid, they would fight you, basically, on that, and with the situation with banks right now, you just wanna be very, very careful. And then I already talked about the interest rates. Do you have any questions?
So, you think, Debbie, how we doing?
I, you're improving every year, so I, I, I know that, uh, Lynette and all your staff put in a lot of work, um, to get it to the point that we could audit it this year, and we are invasive, um, so I know their week that we were here was probably not pleasant, um, for any of your, or maybe pleasant, but, um, they had to pull stuff for us and get ready for us, and then still continue to do their, um, current duties, so, anyway, I wanna thank them for actually being nice to us while we're here.
And next year will be a lot easier.
Great. Any questions?
Also?
No material deficiencies?
No, not this year.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the annual audit for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Got a motion on the floor? Us to go ahead and sub the audit as presented?
I would second that motion.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any of those?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, and once again to echo, echo the comments, uh, Lynette, Matt, thank you so much, appreciate it. Everybody actually said hello, everybody stepped up and helped out, so really appreciate it, but Lynette, thank you. Did an outstanding job, appreciate that.
And see, guys, it wasn't as bad for you as-
It wasn't too bad.
It was pretty for you.
That was good. All right, let's go ahead and keep moving on, uh, jump into B, consider an act upon proposed drainage master plan prepared by Kim Lee Horn and Associates for Lake Forest Estates.
So, council, this is the last item that we're working on, and I know a gentleman here for Kim Lee Horn to go through the process with you, this has been reviewed by legal, and all changes that legal had has been accepted by Kim Lee Horn, we have it final documents, which is what was emailed out to you, part of the package.
Good evening, gentlemen, I'm Shikor Guru. How do you do? How much money is there with Kim Lee Horn? I understand we have some shallow flooding and current issues, and make sure some issues are cleared, and then we were approached to submit a proposal, um, in order to see and understand the, uh, issues ongoing currently at this point. So, we have here a proposal that talks about the scope of services. Throughout the course of the project, um, we'll be coordinating various agencies throughout the city, um, to, to, um, make sure that they all, uh, involve with the process, at the same time, get concrete, clear, update, exactly, case study on itself until the course of the project. Uh, we start the project with some data collection, um, and, uh, essentially talk to various agencies, the city staff, the county, the municipal county, the county, all counties surrounding city of Lidl, to see what information we could gather, because drainage does not follow city boundaries, it follows waters. So, there could be water flowing from other, um, communities through Lidl and flowing out of Lidl as well, which is very important first to identify, um, all the municipal agencies that are not within Lidl but sound in Lidl as well. So, in order for us to, that we like to do like a drainage master plan, which kind of identifies all the water flowing into Lidl, water flowing out of Lidl. Especially with focus on the Lake Shore subdivision. Seems like the area we lived in out there was pretty flat, so there was a lot of shallow flooding, rainwater coming in, uh, and our initial analysis will, we kind of divided the analysis into like three different parts, one will be a very preliminary analysis just to identify what's really happening and identify where to focus. The second one will be, once we identify focus areas, try to do a little bit more, and further analyze, uh, the parallax, where the water's essentially starting, or what's really causing it. And then the third step would be to understand what all can we do to fix the problem, or identify solution, or if not, find out some alternatives, and figure out what would be the best alternative, uh, which would kind of go into project prioritization, is as we go in and get all this analysis, data analysis done, we'll have better understanding about what possible solutions would be better, and what may not actually work as well. And then, uh, we'll also have some really OPCC segment, uh, costing, cost estimating for all these alternatives, because essentially when we have a solution, sometimes there can be multiple solution, solutions for a certain problem, and then the deciding factor usually would be funding, to figure out what would be a cheaper and a better alternative. We'll be providing them as well, at the same time, um, Kim Lee Horn has a lot of experience with grant writing, so there could be a lot of federal and state grants, grants out there, especially to deal with funding problems, uh, we'll identify those grants to figure out, a lot of them required, the first step- Once a plan is in place and identifies all the costs and also accompanies that with the benefit cost analysis, which is usually a requirement for these grants, we'll be able to try to help the city identify some of those grants. It could be from PVA, it could be from Texas Water and Water Board, or it could be Texas Northeast, multiple funding sources out there that we've got to reach out to in order to fund these projects. Finally, we throw out everything with the report, with all the findings, analysis, observations, and results to report and we'll be submitting to the city.
Quick questions for you. I know you spoke about how this master drainage plan, right, is going to, it's not just going to be that area of town, right? It's the surrounding area, the area north of town, east, west, south of it. How is this going to fit into the overall drainage plan? Because Kim Lee Horn, y'all are also working on our drainage utility.
Yeah.
So, you know, of course, once we get that in place, we're probably going to come back, right, after that's established, do a citywide drainage plan. So I guess we're not going to have to redo it. I guess that's my question, right? We do this, right? It's just going to tie in one piece of the puzzle for the overall city drainage part.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Because, you know, the water's got to go somewhere, right? We fix it out there in Lake Shore, where's it going to go? We got to put it somewhere, it's not just going to disappear. So I don't know how much you've looked at it, but where is that water going to go once we get it flowing through Lake Shore?
I can answer that real quick. So the data came down, we drove Lake Shore and I drove on the route of kind of how the water flows. My biggest concern was kind of Route 681 because that's going to be the first big bottleneck we reach and then how it would flow through the city and ultimately up behind subdivision on 35.
Park Place.
And then, you know, ultimately down to 35, under 35 and then out that way.
And that's the water from Lake Shore, right?
Yes. The best we can tell, that's, that's the semi-flow of how the water moves.
And there has been a change, counsel, just so you know. BMA has actually gone ahead and taken care of the rest of the canal. They had done a section. Now it extends to the back portion of the Phase Two. So that canal, it was more for irrigation purposes, but for flood, you would get a lot of water through that. That is shut down now. So there'll be a lot less that goes into that neighborhood now that is, that was coming through that, so that'd be part of the analysis. Counsel, if you like, on page 33 on what was submitted, what was sent to you, it has the tasks listed on there, task one, two, and three, four, all the way to six, very specific in a sense of what they're going to be doing. So if you want to take a look at that, you kind of get a big picture of, there's, there's quite a few things that they're going to be doing in part of this that goes along. But Charles, you bring up a good point in a sense of the coverage.
Well, and of course, right, it's going to flow back behind Park Place, it's going to flow outs, out of the city and it's going to converge south of the city off 3175. I mean, my, my thought process, and we've had multiple conversations on this, we don't want to be flooding the people out in the county out once we get everything flowing through the city like we should. And going, going back to what y'all submitted, the letter, on page four, we talked about stuff that's not covered, right? And the questions I had regarding that were, you know, when will a field survey be necessary and what will that cost us? Because I saw that that was not included.
That is true. So after the first initial analysis, when we do an overall preliminary analysis, that's when we identify what infrastructure would need to be field surveyed. Because until we do the first test, we will not actually know what all field survey would require. So typically, we use a combination of as-built data that the city may have for various projects and supplement that with field survey. So we need to, a data collection effort essentially, go through the whole process to see who wants what and then what information can we actually get, which doesn't require field survey, which would help us. This field survey, usually it would be more expensive than data collection. So you know.
It won't be the entire subdivision, it's just identifying what's going to benefit us the most.
That's, usually just the drainage infrastructure towards, which is.
And I also saw we're, I guess we're going to identify five, right, and select three.
Right.
But if we want to add additional, let's say there are five that we want to do, I guess that's another thing, is the additional cost, right? So what are we typically looking at here? I mean, it's just the scope of work really to assess what the price is going to be for that, suppose, hey, well, we'll get to that later. I mean, my, I want perfect drainage throughout the city, right? But we don't have all the money in the world as that audit showed us. But, okay, so we can add stuff to it, but we're going to get three. At least three.
At least three. And I think based on the size of the subdivision itself, five would seem like a reasonable number for us, which is why we presented it that way.
And his, well, last question, I promise. What's the timeline for completion of the drainage plan?
We have a million will give it now, but we're looking at about six to eight months if that works for you guys. We were initially planning on eight months, but we can do a fast track and do six months if needed.
Plus same cost?
Same cost of books.
We'll be pretty busy with Kim Lee Horn over the next six to eight months. We've got three, the city's got three open projects with them right now that requires a lot of data for us to start looking for, gathering and getting to them. Staff will be pretty busy with that.
Thank you for Matt and Lynette though. Did we budget for this?
This, this is why we asked to liquidate that $250,000 CD. As, as these payments start to come in and they're needing to be made, that's when we start to liquidate that out. We're going to leave it in as long as we can to accumulate that less than 1% interest and move on from there.
Counsel? Any other questions?
I move that we accept the drainage master plan as prepared by Kim Lee Horn Associates for Lake Shore Estates.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, sir. Get you working on that fast track, right? We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate it.
I'll sign it, email to you tomorrow.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to C, Consider An Act Upon Resolution Number R 23-04, authorizing imposition of 20% penalty for recollection costs on delinquent city property tax accounts for a year 2022 and subsequent taxes.
So counsel, as you know, we're trying to get our taxes transferred over to the county. The firm that collects our delinquent taxes asked if we had a copy when we had previously approved it. Our current city secretary unfortunately isn't able to locate that, so they asked that we just re-improve it. So that's a 489 re-improvement then.
And that's what it's been.
That's what it's all, yeah.
It used to be 15, but now it's, okay, that is what.
So do we need to rewrite the resolution or?
The resolution was provided in the fact that is the resolution that we got from there legally. And Jesse, y'all, y'all came through, Jesse, and then, so.
So, okay, Matt, the 20%, that's what's allowed by law, right, the taxpayer. We don't have to set it at 20%. And, you know, I would make the argument that we don't necessarily set it as high because this is not, the 20% is not money that the city pays, that's from the taxpayer. You know, in my experience is that, that people fall behind in their property taxes because they're going through hard times, you know? So we're, we're still going to get our penalty and interest if they become delinquents. This is just more money that they're having to pay to settle up, so it makes it harder for them.
And this more money, it's going to come in until June or July?
Yeah, no, no, it kicks in, attorney's fees kick in July.
July first.
Penalty interest kicks in February 1st.
So, and I've done this a lot, so you try to pay, you know, you're not, but you know, if, so basically you want to pay your taxes before July 1st or they hit you with that 20%, which can be substantial. And I've paid it before because it's simple, it's just sometimes you don't have the money.
Just a reminder, so the ordinance, the way it has been, it says on there, authorize the City of Lidl to provide or compensating an attorney up to 20%. So there's flexibility.
However, y'all want to see it, just I believe with the previous delinquent taxes, it was 20, 20%.
So.
Well, what is the attorney? And again, I hate to interject you here, but I've paid a lot of delinquent taxes. The firm collecting our taxes is normally going to tell you what, you're going to have a contract with them, how, what they're going to get, right?
The firm? You mean the county collector of taxes?
Well, no, the, the law firm that collect, so because somebody.
Yeah. If it's going to the county and it's part of the county contract, we're signed with them, Limeburger is going to be, not Limeburger?
Yes.
Yeah, like, they're going to be the delinquent tax collector attorney.
And Limeburger gets the 20%, right?
Yeah, that's where it goes.
Does it have a survey year to night?
No, they do not. But it's to, up to the county, it can go up to 20%.
But would Limeburger collect it for 12%? That's the issue. I mean, I don't think they would. I've, I've never paid 12%, but would pay more.
Why don't you pay your taxes on time?
Because everybody don't have a lot of money. I've got a lot of kids, I'm trying to pay.
That's, that's your choice.
This pain through our attorney to us at, you know, like you saw, I, I mean, I'm not the attorney firm, but I would be remiss to say they probably want 20. They're going to want the max they could get, like anybody else, but it's up to the council and whatever y'all choose to do. We can change it to whatever y'all want.
It's like I said, those, those people, they're, they're the reason that they're not paying their taxes, you know? Trying to have a little sympathy. We're still going to get our money in the city.
Jesse, is this what you normally see or seeing?
Limeburger is one of the largest tax collection firms across the state. They specialize in this area. This is their ordinance, their resolution.
They produced it at 20%.
It doesn't affect the, I mean, does it?
What do y'all see in other cities do? Are they, are we, are the cities doing 15 or most of the states at 20?
I, I think they pretty much just approve if Limeburger does it, because many of them are collected by the county at the county level and it's usually the county agreement that controls it. So the city's just joined those agreements for the purpose of tax.
So everything I've paid and I've paid delinquent taxes in numerous jurisdictions in the last 10 years, it's always the max. It's either 15% and when it went to 20, it's 20%. Just so you know.
That's because it is up to.
It's one thing I know about, delinquent taxes.
Can we set chiefs lower than everybody else is?
No.
You can't do that.
I'd like to set it even higher.
No, I mean, my dealings with, with Limeburger, they're, they're a nationwide law firm and then they're, they're a billion dollar law firm. They, they've netted a billion dollars a year in fines across this country.
So it looks like we were doing 10% in the past.
I don't.
We were doing 10. That's what I was telling you about. So we're going to jump it up another 10%.
How far in the past?
But if we were doing 10, well, I was rich again.
No, yeah, we weren't, we haven't been doing 10.
I don't think it's 10.
No.
I think it was, I think it was pretty much the same. I remember the previous one that was put in front of the council and it was the same thing. It was up to 20%.
The law allowed them about, Jesse, do you remember the number of years ago the law allowed them to go up to 20? Because I thought it used to be tabbed to 15.
It may have been.
That could have been 15 years ago, I don't know. But whenever the law, when I, when I recall, when the law went up, everybody just went up as well. You know, that's just the way it was.
So counsel, this is important for us to be able to take care of within our county too, just so we could go ahead and get things aligned up. And the whole county is actually following with them, right?
Yeah, if I had a supposed county, most of the cities that use that supposed county are using Limeburger.
I'll say one more thing, then I'll shut up. Keep in mind, this does not affect per, this is only if your taxes come due January 1st and you don't pay them until July. So if a person needs a little month or two, you're just paying the regular penalty and interest.
You know what, though? That's not necessarily the case though, because I know that, that previous contracts that Limeburger has drafted, they, they make it, there's a provision where they collect attorney's fees before July 1st.
Well, that's what I'm hoping out.
I'd be really interested to see if that's what they're doing with that supposed county. I haven't seen it recently, but the last time I looked at it, that they were, they were getting, they're getting paid attorney's fees February 1st. I don't agree with the, you know, that's what the law, I don't know how that, that loophole, there's some loophole that they have. So I'd like a little clarification on what we've paid in the past. I see no reason, because I will tell you this in dealing with them, that they have no sympathy for our residents. There's not going to be some, hey, you know me sort of deal. They don't care.
It's kind of all, I see, I'm doing, what I'm, I'm in the system now, it's anywhere between 5% all the way up to 12%. It's kind of just jumping all over the place unless the contract was changed every year.
I think it was all good. We need to up to, again, a percentage and so, fact-specific as to the collection.
I went all the way back to like 2016 and it was at 9% in 2016. It just, it's all over and then, but then in 2011, it jumped to 12 and went back down to 20, you know, so.
Because if you look on your tax statement, Charles, and you've seen millions of them, right, thousands of them, right?
I can't count that, man.
But it, it says on there, subject to 15% penalty and then it went to 20% penalty on the tax thing. I've never seen it say anything but 15 or 20.
Yeah. It changed about six years ago, I think. Have to look it up. It's never authorized to collect more. Probably 10 years, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
The past decade it was put that way.
So do we know the, the date for delinquency?
When did taxes go delinquent?
February 1st.
Yes.
Attorney's fees kick in July 1st.
Yeah. Delinquent is a February 1st and then the attorney fees kick in the summer.
The attorney in February 1st, they have to pay a little bit more of your month and then, and then things kick in in July.
July, if you don't collect that, then you get the letter from them and the additional 20%.
Each one goes up a certain percentage rate.
Yes, sir.
So that we have to pay in December, in December of Denver and then this year we have, we have to mark and change or we have to pay a little bit more.
Is the county, is the county collecting our taxes yet?
Gotcha. We're still working on, on clearing out the last couple items before they'll take them over. We have a lot of cleaning up to do, refunds.
And whenever they do take over the collection, are they still going to be offering that rebate, that 3% rebate that we currently have been offering in the past? You know, if you pay your taxes in October, you like 3%?
The early payment?
Yeah.
No.
I believe they, I believe they said yes. I can get that, I'd have to go find the, the contract that we got with them. If that came in, it was right when I first started or right before I started, but I remember eventually getting the contract from them.
Do we get a discount? They, they.
Yeah, that's what it said.
Yeah.
I thought the city was going to collect taxes and then the delinquency was going to go to the county.
No, we were getting out of collecting property taxes altogether. We're going to send it to county and let them collect all our property taxes.
Oh, okay. I was under the impression that it was the city and then all the county. So it's important that we do get that discount, because I do take advantage of that.
If I remember right, I was part of that, I'm almost positive Margaret said yes, that that was any part of it.
Can you verify?
I remember when we first started talking about turning this over to the county.
It was pretty much going to mirror what we had.
One of their pitches was that they would not give the 3%. And the question is, do we want to turn this over to them and hurt citizens who pay early every year?
They weren't going to give the early discount?
That, that we gave it, but the county wasn't going to honor the same discount that we gave. I remember that. Somewhere in the discussion.
Why don't we do this, counsel? Why don't we go ahead and table this for the next meeting? So if I can get a motion for us to go ahead and table and that gives us a chance to go ahead and get the information.
Now we'll table this and investigate further before we make a decision.
Got it. Motion for us to go ahead and table this item?
A second.
Got a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you so much, appreciate that. We'll get all of our stuff ready and bring it back to council.
Try to find the previous collecting contract.
Okay, here we go. D, consider an act upon adopting ordinance number 23-05 instituting a homestead exemption from taxation for all residents of the city of Lidle in the amount of 20% of the appraised value of their homestead property, but not less than 5,000 as provided by the Texas Tax Code, section 11.13.
This was one of Mr. Kate's deal, but I'll tell you, we last approved this in July of '22, but we were, we were too late to get it to take into effect. And talking to legal, it's there, it's still active, but we can just reapprove it again, just to reaffirm it our stance if that's what the council wants to do. Mr. Kate, does that?
I mean, I don't, do we even need to reapprove it? I mean, my question of course was, I was just requesting an update on where it was, because I didn't see anything in regards to that previously. I think it was July 11th of last year. Michael made the motion, Sam second, that we were gonna go ahead and offer that for, it's just the residents with the homestead exemption. It's not everybody. It was kind of done to offset the increase in appraised value, increase in utility rates, increase in tax rates, and to just kind of incentivize people moving to Lidle, calling Lidle a home.
And it's going up again. I just got my prayers on it, went up again. So I would ask that we reapprove it, so we've got a current one that is signed and documented that we have on file.
We got a number associated with it.
So I was asked to look into that, but.
Yeah, so Charles, I want to thank you for bringing this back up, because we did make, I did make the motion and we did agree on it and basically legal's advice, we did set those values. But I did ask Liddette if she could take a look and give us an analysis on what impact it would have on the taxes.
So overall, we, Michael, we only have 566 residents that have even applied for the homestead. So out of the, it's not as big an impact as I thought. Now, I still need extrapolating a little bit more of it, but I don't see it being more than like 72,000, that's what I came up with right now. And that's a very rough number.
But that's under the previous tax rate.
Previous.
So even with the new tax rate, we're gonna be paying more than that, even with the increased values and everything. So I think we're missing out on that, but we're.
I'm sorry, 86,540. So it seems like there is a lot of individuals in the city that have not applied for their homestead. They probably don't understand.
Be something to go ahead and put on different platforms.
So Jesse, this can come up every year?
No, usually it's just approved once and it's.
But it can be brought back up and amended if needed?
Sure, just like any other ordinance, yes, it could, but it's not necessary to do so.
Well, I'm just saying that because Lidle being the city, the size that we are, a lot of our income does come from taxes, so I just want to make sure we're still on top of it. The initial motion was for 20, but the minimum of 5,000. So what do we need here? Do we just need to?
Basically a reapproval, so we have an order.
I'd like to approve the ordinance again. We've had some difficulty in finding previous ordinances that were the signed versions.
Yeah, we got a number associated. We started doing that now, so it makes it a lot easier.
Okay, mayor, so I would like to make the motion to approve ordinance number 23-05 instituting homestead exemption from taxation for residents of the city of Lidle in the amount of 20% of the appraised value of their homestead property, but not less than 5,000 as provided by the Texas Tax Code, section 213.
Got a motion on close second. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you, appreciate that. See if we can go ahead and take care of one more and then we'll go ahead and break. E, discuss and consider and take appropriate action on possible relocation of bond funds designated for street improvements and to reallocate the funds towards closed water and sewer system improvements.
This was a item from Mr. Kate that brought up.
Yeah, this was another item and, you know, Matt and I talked about this briefly last week. I believe it was back in December that y'all had chosen the streets to get worked on. I'm looking at the map here and of course, I'm not pushing to not get these streets paid. My thought behind this is that we have three major water system projects to be working on. Right now, they're still with TRC and then from there, they're gonna go to TCEQ for approval and then we'll go off a bid. And I think what we've seen here in the past two years in particular is that the cost of everything has risen exponentially. And my big concern, of course, is being able to get these projects constructed with the funds from that certificate obligation that we got last year. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not looking to not pay these streets. I want to pave all the streets. I'd like to pave all the streets in Golden Lidle if I could. But I would just ask that we hold off on pulling the trigger on these streets until we find out what the final cost is gonna be for these projects. So that's why I brought it before the council.
How long would you expect the delay to be? Months or?
It's probably gonna be six months.
Yeah, I would imagine six, eight months by the time we work through the last little snafus that legal wants cleaned up in the water contract, get all that authorized and signed, they draw it all up, get TCEQ approval and then we send it out to bid and then open bids.
So where do you anticipate?
Yeah, we'd be in the next fiscal year for sure, whereas this street one is ready to go down.
We already did the engineering on streets, right?
Yeah, the engineers already done some work, yes, sir. There is some costs associated with that.
And how much was that?
21-ish thousand, 26,000, I have to look up the number somewhere.
And have we, have we approved the contract yet?
No, that hasn't gone to bid yet. It is, we are ready to send it out to bid now. I got the final okay with legal Friday, I think it was Friday, they reviewed everything.
We paid that 27,000 for?
We haven't paid the full 26,000.
But they've done work.
They've done some work, yeah. They've done the majority of the work, yes.
That's still gonna be good though.
Yes, it'll still be good and then the issue is, just like Mr. Kate saying, everything is going up. So if we delay streets, then, you know, we would get less streets done. I don't disagree with Mr. Kate. Everything that is going out for bid, unfortunately, that time is going up and we don't know those costs, we can just operate on what the engineers give us and then the direction of the council. My last direction from the council was the streets and this, that's where we are today. If council chooses otherwise, I can tell either one, stop on this, move this, however you want to do it.
We paid 3,000 out of part of TRC on the street.
They'll have more, but. Probably just the engineering portion.
So the thing for consideration is, you know, we did, when we went out and we had the discussions about street improvement, we said we were gonna do, we were gonna take care of them. There's not one opportunity to go out and talk to individuals and they bring up the concerns that they have about certain streets. Some streets are associated to projects that are gonna happen in the future and those will be aligned with other aspects, but some of the streets is just basically part of the list of the streets that we need to take care of. Like the council considered too, anything that we don't do this year, we miss out the window, once again, you're looking until next year for us to be able to get there. And some of our streets have need attention without a doubt.
My only concern is when we got the bond money, we had public hearings, now we didn't have anybody show up, of course, but we talked about that bond money was for these type of projects, street improvements being one of them. I do think, you know, the average citizen does understand that costs go up and other things and you have to prioritize and move things around, but you'll probably have some other residents that say, no, when you got the bond money, we didn't say anything because you said you were doing streets and now you're, you know?
When, I'm thinking that when they were talking about the bond and how much we needed and how it was gonna be allocated, I think they, if I remember correctly, they figured in potential inflation.
They did.
Because they know, they knew there was a one to two year lag period from when we get that money and get all the ordinary work done to actually start buying bits and pieces, right?
Yes, sir. They did, but I do agree, when you bid things, they, it all depends on how hungry somebody is to work, how much work is out there. We've seen some things bidding higher. I remember back in the day, you bid this and you didn't like the bid, so you rebid it again, you could get it a little lower sometimes. Unfortunately, that hadn't been the case.
So we didn't up the price though, David. So we had set amounts and we did. So we knew we were gonna do a million streets or here, whatever. We can change it. We can put in any capital project that we want, but it's more of like Charles and, you know, what we promised the people, what we were gonna do and that's where.
We can spend the 8.5.
Because some of the biggest complaints I get here in the city are, you know, my car is gonna get, you know, torn up with the potholes. So, you know, but then again, we need sewer, so it's.
It's bad, yeah.
Quick question for James. How old are these elevated store stands?
I believe that's at least 50 years old.
So, I mean, the mindset behind, you know, when Craig was in, Craig Bell was in there a month ago and asked him to come back with what it's gonna cost us for the half a million, half a million gallon tank, right? That tank, whether it's 250 or 500,000, that's gonna last us 50 years, you know? And 70% of our residents are gonna be on that east side of 35 in District 4 and they're gonna be relying on water pressure. So if we don't have enough water pressure, that's gonna be a bigger issue. I mean, you can't eat asphalt, you can try, right? You can't drink asphalt. And I understand that people, they wanna have smooth roads, they don't wanna have potholes, right? But that's what they see, you know, that's why, and one of the things that a municipality provides is water systems. Yes, we provide streets too, but water and sewer, no one else is gonna do that. So, I mean, at the bare minimum, we've done it in the past, right? We've pushed back working on streets and we have more money. What, last year, we had $250,000 that we put on our streets? What was that amount? Was it 200,000?
It was 232,000.
232. And I don't disagree with Mr. Kate saying one bit.
And I'm not saying, like I said.
I'll see the project.
Dave, these projects come in, we can get them all done, fantastic. But we give them one shot to build them.
Are you suggesting we do no roads this year or?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying we, we hold off until we get what it's gonna cost us, because we don't know what it's gonna cost us yet.
If we hold off through the summer, we lose a year.
It's a year.
The summer of next year.
These projects are gonna go the next 50 years though. Elevated store stand is gonna go, is gonna provide water for those people for 50 years, water pressure. And all that is taken into consideration as part of our engineers inputs and what we look at. And what do they recommend as far as prioritizing water systems or streets?
I didn't ask them one day prior, this is just the projects that the council prioritized.
They got in front of us, we looked at everything. We designated amounts based on the areas we're balancing out, so. I'm not saying that the water or anything, but we went across the board and we looked at the different things that the city needs and we designated amounts. And that's what we communicated as part of our certificates of obligation. So I think we need to follow that and be able to take care of that.
Now, we do have a new budget coming up, okay? Remember, I'm only a month away from starting a new budget for the city. We have other options coming up with this, with the new C store, there's sing, they're gonna be done with that truck stop soon. Hopefully, that's gonna generate more money to come in that we can put into the roads as well.
You know, we talked about the fines, right, the increase in fines?
Yes, yes.
And one of the four things that that fine money can be used for is roads.
Right.
Roads, bridges, culverts and what?
Richie snacks.
Richie snacks.
But I think I heard somewhere you say we have the flexibility to move that certificate of obligation under around as long as it's capital improvements, right?
And talking, in bond council, the email I got back from them in response was, yes, you could move, you could take some money out of this to put over here as long as it stays within that capital improvement.
We move some of it just for the water, just in case and not all of it. Are you asking for all of it to be reallocated or just pause it? Just saying, hold off till we get a better idea of what it's gonna cost us.
You gotta remember, only a million went to streets though, too.
When are the streets supposed to, when are we supposed to start?
It's ready to be bid now.
When is the time of which we're?
They would pay during the summer typically. Yeah, I mean, it's all depending on the contractor too, whoever gets selected.
How much, what can we get expected to spend on roads?
Call it 600,000.
Can we get the recommendation from our engineer? What would you prioritize here?
If that's what the council wants.
I think we don't, we have, we just have another meeting, we'll have to decide tonight, because I'd like to know too, which is the most important to us right now? Because I don't wanna be without water, that's what I'm just saying. Okay, let me stop that. Okay, let me stop. I don't want the fear. I don't think I'm gonna be without water. There's nothing out there, the data shows right now that we are more than capable of taking care of the sustainability of where we're at right now with water and sewer where we're at. Everything that we're doing right now is to be able to take care of us as we actually grow. There's nothing right now that shows, hey, we're worried, we're gonna lose water here in the next, in the next, in the next year, two years, five years. We just put a brand new well online. We have more than capacity of being able to have the water that we actually need. Do we have projects to be able to, to be able to support the growth? Yes. And that's what was part of the certificate of obligation. I just don't want anybody to think that the city is in a position where we're actually, don't have the capacity of being able to take care of what our needs are based on the growth that we actually have.
So what the mayor's saying, when TRC laid these projects out, it was with the knowns of what was coming in on that side of town and they designed it.
That's what we're paying.
We're betting on, we paid the engineer, here's our, here's the knowledge we have of these subdivisions, what do we need to do with infrastructure?
I think the infrastructure capacity report from 2019, it didn't include Rosewood or Harris Trailer Park though, did it? You had Lidle Farms.
Not at the time, but once we started these projects, they were the knowns of this stuff and this is where they chose that we need to move forward.
So like I said, you know, we talked to Craig about a month ago and he says he's gonna come back. Has Craig got any ideas on what an increased capacity elevated tank would?
No, I checked, we haven't did it. I did talk to him briefly about instead of doing a metal, like what we currently have, a metal lake tank, since this was gonna be on 35, be kind of a gateway to the city, to maybe do the concrete type structure and they're seeing those bid in the $3 million range. So we'll bid it, just be on the safe side, but we're gonna bid metal as well. What we currently have, they'll be bid at the 250 mark and then the next stage up. So that we have physical or in hard numbers to look at and if we want to increase that, you know, we've got the money or we can go from a 250 to a 500 or.
What was the original probable cost on that elevated tank?
It goes 1.5.
And now it's not 1.5. That's my concern, is that, you know, I, I get it, I get what you're saying, mayor. We need to get the streets taken care of. Saying let's hold off three months until we get these probable costs back. We're gonna miss out on this here. We're gonna miss out on this here. Mayor, I'm looking at, okay, these streets, I live on Boom Drive. That street does not need to be repaved, it's not a high volume street. Easy street, not high volume. You know, gray street, it's not a high, you know, these streets that are high volume, the only one that is probably a high volume street is a section right now of downtown between Somerset and Prairie on Railroad Street, just because of all the commercial stuff we got going on down there. Like I said, I want all these streets to be nice, but looking at text data, you know, we're taking Railroad Street all the way to the city limits. What is, what is the total linear feet on that, Matt? Because I don't see it on there.
I ran from the North City Limits of Bear County all the way down to the Veterans Park. It would be all of Railroad Street.
Yeah, that's, that's, the text dot numbers are saying that there's 787 cars that travel that a day, you know? It's, James, you got something?
Yeah, they're gonna tear up Railroad Street from Prairie to McDonald Street.
We're working, as part of the contract, if, if the water line that's going in is in conflict with that, then they would hold off that section until construction's over and then come back in and pave it after that. But they're still working out if there's enough room and easement to get the water line in and not affect.
Railroad Street.
A new page.
From everything that has gone on with our construction around here, Railroad Street has actually gotten busier. We've getting a lot of folks that are actually using that as a way to be able to get into 35 and be able to avoid. So you have a lot more vehicles that are using that road now to get around town and to be able to get going north on that one.
We need to look at the bridge improvement if we're gonna do Railroad Street too. I mean, I think those are pretty narrow out there, ones not marked very well, right, James?
Yeah, they're too narrow.
We had a fatality out there, you know, many years ago, friend of mine, but we do need to work, make sure that we're looking at the bridge improvement out there. Because you're gonna see, I was here when they paved Railroad Street, do you remember when that was, Matt? 15 years ago? I mean, it, boy, it was a, it was a hot rod slip out there. I mean, it was, it was nice. But we do need, but we still have issues with bridges that need to be looked at too.
Are you talking about where the drainage is out there?
Well, I don't know about actually, I don't know about actually structural, bear, you know, for the, we need to make sure they're up to.
There's no guardrails.
There's no guardrail stuff and so we need to make sure those are up to the current.
And there's other streets around town that we need to do that. And we got one project right now that we still.
And there's other streets around town that we need to do that and we got one project right now that we still not done with the guardrails too so totally understand that. So I wanna make sure that we kinda stay focused with this and what the agenda item is this is for us to go ahead and and take appropriate action. The reallocation of the bond funds designated so this is the possible action on there so.
Taking account of inflation right that's what you said right?
I mean that's what the engineers actually put on there.
We don't have anything to worry about is my understanding.
Wow there there's no guarantee.
But yeah there's no guarantees.
I won't guarantee we'll come in on budget.
We talked about all these things we proved all these things we went through the whole bond their certificate of obligation and got all the numbers and. Worked with financial people to ask for what we needed and what we could afford and we basically told the city we're fixing roads this year. So I'm inclined to keep doing what we're doing get the roads done and we have two big new businesses coming in and it will be increased revenue. And every house that goes in out there we get more tax from so I say bet on the common let's keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah I got tax definitely David we have an obligation to our citizens as council members. We have talked about these we brought these up if we do need to allocate more money then we've got budget coming up we could do that then. If if we feel like it needs to be focused elsewhere but up to this point we have spent a lot of time and effort and. I honestly believe that when we open up these these items for for the public. Somebody has a negative opinion or a complaint they're gonna come in people that don't come in is because they agree. That that's my feeling on it so I agree with David I think we need to stay focused.
And how many streets are we thinking?
It was.
Do you have the list?
Yes sir it was.
One two three four five six seven eight nine ten eleven.
Those are all the ones we're gonna put out to bid if they all fall within the range great. If they're over then we come back and council tells me I wanna do that one for that look that one for that much that we. We figure out how many we can fit in that six hundred we're we're gonna ask them for every road that the council gave me a list for.
Did you make that list available to council?
Uh yeah it went out to everybody and then. It was the same list that everybody here that night approved and we wrote down.
Because I I know at one point you asked each council member to make their wish list and this that includes that?
Every street that was given to me as part of that wish list went on this this list.
So you had sent it out I need to look at it.
I can see the entire package it's a hundred and forty six.
Oh it's that back okay.
Yeah it's a very large one.
Just yesterday I saw folks complaining about our streets and. Somebody talked to the city council do something.
I saw a certain post.
Which street were they talking about?
They were they were talking about the extension of Somerset that runs down to the county maintenance where they're putting the Harris Park. And we're not doing that one because there's gonna be major work done down there when Harris comes in.
Well we're still working on that but we're I can tell you the reason that one didn't make this list it was talked about is we need to do major drainage work that is probably a certificate of obligation. Project in and of itself because of how much it would.
Y'all know what it says?
Depending on their.
I won't mention it James but you wanna know what it says?
Yeah what street?
It says Lidle really needs to do some work on their roads especially forty one seventy five between Main Street and I thirty five access road and if it's being McDonald's talk about these roads are tearing up our vehicles. And are both main thoroughfares and keep getting worse that's the gist.
Yeah a lot of Somerset and Somerset and thirty one seventy five that's what.
Any comments agreeing on that?
No I mean I. Look y'all picked these streets that's great great choices on the streets. But we got one shot for increased capacity on elevated store station so that's why we're a council though so. Y'all wanna do that mayor I'd like to make a motion that we take no action on this.
Get a motion for us to take no action on this? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you let's go ahead and go on break take eight thirteen let's go ahead and take fifteen minute break. Hey Lynette if you can go ahead and show us eight twenty nine since we're just here before we get started. Jump right back into the agenda so let's go ahead and move on council at discussing consider possible action on request. From former city secretary to retrieve additional personal items from city hall buildings.
Okay I can give a brief council whether it was an item for Mr. K I don't know if he wants to breathe first.
No I just had a you know phone call in from Josie saying that she still had some stuff down here that she wanted to give back so that's why it's on there.
So council the backstory is when when she retired from the city there were. A lot of items that we believe were hers still here. Staff has worked to get her as much of the items back that we could identify ultimately given her back roughly five truckloads of. Personal property that we relived from hers no questions asked out of good faith and. I've always told her we gotta continue going to do everything we've since been through the entire office that we think we have found everything that's hers. I've always said provide us with the list of what you're looking for we've yet been supplied that list and then I'm gonna hand you out one about you. And then the other morning or sorry the other night I didn't see it till the morning. I received a text from from her again asking for her property and we were gonna get it to her. Again my response to her was I believe we've given you everything that we can identify please supply with a list of what else you need. Still hadn't received that list. She I guess was able to get ahold of all the councilmen and one of the councilmen was able to get a description that we've been asking for for a specific item. Once we had that description staff was able to find that specific item again no questions asked we gave it back. So working through legal we drafted the letter that you see in front of you that was given to her just giving her till. March thirtieth to give us no I'm sorry that was it giving her till May fourth thirty days to give us a list of what is she is looking for. And until then because the only thing I've been told is decorations. The decoration remind. Uh you'll see attached to the back of this just one receipt from Walmart from our credit card that shows Easter decorations for hers. At this point I can't go through and and say that all the decorations are hers there are decorations the city has had and been in use in the twenty years that I've worked here. They've always been displayed here they've been used for events throughout the city. It's undermined something they belong to the city they've been stored here and they've been used for city events. If they were somebody's personal items they should have been tagged as such or not stored here in the city I guess. I don't know really what else we can do. We were given an open records request for a list of all personal property in the city we've answered that and given it back to the person. So they can go do that and try to identify. I've been asked if they can just come in here the previous city secretary asked if she can just come in here and just tell me that's my nature that's my nature. Uh we can't do that's that's not a normal practice for anyone to do and. I I don't know how we prove or disprove at this point. Yes sir.
Uh you mentioned several times five truckloads to five truck like the back end of a full size pickup.
Yes sir. The back end of a full size pickup fully loaded staff has been in here on our days off. Going at no cost to the city we came in and went through these items. Almost every single item that was in the back office that I'm in now that office and head school room is being given back to her. And all the items throughout the city that we like I said it was five truckloads worth of stuff.
You just said throughout the city does that mean?
Well I said throughout city hall here.
Okay were the things stored in other locations in the city that were hers when she's playing?
She alleged that there's storage items down at the community center annex building. I've been inside that building there's a ton of decorations our Christmas lights throughout the years. A bunch of city records again until I can get a list of something that person is specifically looking for that we can then. Try to find I I don't know how to say. Every decoration is yours if that's the case we've got a bunch of old rainiers and a bunch of city decorations that.
When when did we take those truckloads you remember it was in the summer?
Oh James do you remember when that was it was sometime in the summer.
Or fall.
For the I mean it was so much that the the previous city secretary rented one storage unit. And said I'm done because this one's full and I said unfortunately no we're still loading up you gotta so she had to rent a second one. Since then we found more and delivered another truckload or two in that timeframe just as we found it said hey here's some more please return this.
And from that time is when you've been mentioning and give us a list because she kept asking.
And again we've given official notice please supply with a list. But my response when I said give me the list you the response was you would know more of what the city owns than I can do.
Now what's our current policy for whenever somebody resigns retired gets fired or personal items to be removed from. Her office what happens you know if chief resigns tomorrow? You know gonna leave this stuff in there I guess I guess I bring that up because. She resigned what in June of last year and here we are you know talking about well it's not cost the city any uh any money. It has cost us money because you had to confer with legal on this I mean the the manner that it been spent I feel like. It far exceeded the value on those items right it's like what thousand dollars of stuffed animals sort of deal?
I I couldn't give you value which I mean.
My thing is is that we've spent plenty of time and money on this already and we got more important things to be working on as a city.
I agree with you yes sir.
And of course the only reason that that I put it on the agenda is because you know the prospect. The threat of possible litigation arose and that's gonna cost us even more so I just I wanna. Avoid the embarrassment to the city to have to deal with something like this you know so I think the takeaway is to get a policy in place. Where somebody resigns you give them two weeks to get their stuff. And that's it there's none of this back and forth for a year sort of deal because it's going it's going on what ten months now.
But you should also use this as a personal storage space too.
Hey it's just gone but moving forward though we need a policy in place if we don't have one get your stuff.
I mean at other big companies you don't bring in more than you can take out in a box you don't you know that's just the what you do.
All I can tell council is everything that we could identify in asking questions to previous staff members that were here that they said that is hers we've given back. I can't I mean unless you tell me to give it back decorations all the decor I I don't know what that means. If that's the case I can give her back all the dec you tell me how you wanna move forward and we can give back every decoration I can find in the city. But it's I mean.
Is there still stuffed animals here because that's what you told me that.
Sure and I can see in the receipt that stuffed animals a city purchase with a city credit card.
She said that uh she had there was some gifts from her sister two sisters one of them already passed away.
Every stuffed animal that was stored in in her previous office in the area that she said is her secondary and third office were given back to her. All the other stuffed animals that we found throughout the city I can't prove for her now if we found it it was a Winnie the Pooh we give it back to her.
Yeah I I mean I don't know what.
I don't know but if she wants stuffed animals and you tell me you give back every stuffed animal I can find I I'm looking for council direction I can't give it back because I can't prove the city didn't buy it. If that's the case what stops her from saying that chair is.
You have proof that the city did buy stuff.
That's what I'm saying I've got proof that the city purchased some some animals.
I agree with that.
I hear you saying that we that that you've taken almost two storage buildings full of stuffed animals. Are we gonna bill her for equivalent value two storage rooms for the past thirty forty years? I I'm being a bit facetious but she used city hall as a storage room I was in her office. Her office when she couldn't use it as an office and it honestly looked much like a porter's house. And you cleaned it out so you know that. So I would move that we follow legal's advice and after made the fourth decision closed.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
So I'll second that motion. So what are you asking for a list Matt of everything that you had accumulated over forty forty six years?
A detailed list and any supporting documents.
Receipts.
Proving ownership receipts photos with it.
What is what's the IRS requirement on receipt retention?
Have one is there?
Well something personal it was.
Years? Yeah but hers she. That's what I mean that's that's my thing is like hey I couldn't even give you a list of what's in my own home right now so it's like hey you asking for a list? I don't care take all the decorations that you want to deal I was never a fan of them that's my position on it I'm just tired of dealing with this issue.
So Paul and I went and looked I just want you all to know we went back and we went through everything and we have pretty much given her back any stuffed animal there was we didn't wanna keep them it was cluttered. We wanted it all gone so there's not a lot of there was like one duck. That we found the duck and got the duck back to her but the rest of it I don't the all the stuffed animals are gone we wanted them gone.
Nobody wants all that crap.
Can't give her a police escort to go and and look for stuff and say hey well I bought that in eighty seven or something like that.
Uh we were advised by legal didn't we?
It's he said she said man she could point to this cattle and say she bought this.
I mean let's be realistic though here's a woman hundreds of millions of dollars in city funds over her career here and she's gonna be be nickel and dimeless for decorations I mean. I'm in the opinion that hey she says that's hers I wanna believe her with that like I said I'm I'm done with this matter. I brought it before you know put it on the agenda so we could talk about it but it's ridiculous it's ridiculous that we're talking about this right now.
Yes sir.
Okay got a motion got a second any further discussion?
One more thing moving forward I would like to see that the city could implement some kind of rule or rule to. Limit or prohibit employees of purchasing personal items to be used by the city. I understand bringing in your own clock radio bringing in picture frames for personal use I understand that but when you're bringing in items that the city's gonna use that's a big no no. That should not never be allowed by any employer.
To to add to that can we work on getting that implemented too when somebody resigns or fire whatever that they have a set time period to remove to remove. Any personal property from city owned buildings.
Make an amendment to the handbook.
Okay so let me go ahead and tackle one first and the first one is with from the legal advice with. What we're doing with the list had a motion had a second any further discussion all those in favor? Any opposed? Second one that was mentioned is for us to go ahead and approve the or to update the handbook for us to be able to provide specific guidance on there.
Make that motion.
Whether it be the maintainability you make a motion on that? Second okay. Maintainability and also the accessibility after okay so that a second any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? I'm just writing down some notes stand by. Alright thank you council appreciate that let's go ahead and move on to G considering act considering act upon task order number twenty three dash zero three with T TRC engineers. And the amount of three thousand for the engineering services related to the Harris driveway floodplain development permit.
So council this started off when the. The Harris's came in and pulled a what's called a simple permit for a what was supposed to be a sidewalk. Then it turned out to be an actual driveway and it runs through the flood uh floodplain. So it triggered some more things it's not a simple permit there's gotta be additional permitting fees additional inspections stuff like that. And it has to be approved by our engineers because it was built in the floodplain. They reviewed it and they estimated it to take up to three thousand dollars to do what they need to with the Harris's give them the information to get this officially approved. I reached out to the Harris's and was just told today that they're gonna talk to another engineer about getting data they need that our so where our engineers have it. And they'll let us know how they're gonna move forward. I advise that we would you know do our part get this approved and have it on standby so when they're. Get their ball rolling however they wanna move forward we'll go from there but it's not necessarily I mean. If we don't move forward and get this approved I guess then we have to work through legal on how it gets removed from being built in the floodplain because it is built there now.
That's the one they just put in the shoes left just before we go through that?
Again it was it was permitted. As a simple permit when everything came through until we actually saw it constructed and and myself and Paul got involved with it.
There are state code requirements regarding improvements made in the floodplain requires engineers seal whenever you do that and so. This is sort of the backfilling some of those requirements.
Yeah I wonder. Sure, yeah, I wonder what's on building. They were cutting right through the drainage.
I said, we're not trying to, I mean, we're just trying to bring it up to where it needs to be now, even. And I think we've got the supporting documents, they've got photographs and everything that our engineers and, and building inspectors, they said that they would be okay with what they have, I think, moving forward. We just need, our engineers need additional data with, uh, flow and stuff.
So it's already completed?
Oh, yes, sir. It was completed and done until we saw and said, oh, timeout, that wasn't what was, the permit was pulled for, and we went backwards and had to hit the brakes on it.
When, when, was this something that happened while I was going?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think it's been a few months.
Yeah, they just finished it a month or two ago.
Yeah, I don't know what they're gonna do to continue on, but they haven't done anything to stop where it is right now. And this is because when they sold the, the park, they lost their access to that area from Creek Street. And now their access is back from thirty-five. So it's their only way to get through that floodway, floodplain area. We met with them, they knew this was coming, uh, and.
This is the normal where we just ask our engineers to give us a price to be able to do their.
Yeah, and there won't be any costs in that. I don't see anything that's paid out, the city gets free, reimbursed before we release any final documents.
Now we move with proof.
Mayor, I'm moved that we approved that.
What'd he say?
Dash zero-three with TRC engineers and the amount of three thousand dollars for engineering services related to the Harris driveway floodplain development permit.
Okay, got a, second? Got a second over here? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that. Let's go ahead and move on to H. Consider an act upon task order number twenty-three dash zero-four with TRC engineering services and the amount seven hundred and fifty for the elevation certificate at nineteen-five thirty-six South Somerset Street, Delight, Texas.
Again, state content, this is a house that was built in a portion of a floodplain. I, I thought this was already taken care of, but in talking with permitting, we couldn't issue a CVO because we don't have this final seal approval from our engineer. Uh, they've seen it all, and they've got, they've gotta get some more information from the people, and they have just paid seven hundred and fifty dollars. But we need to move on this because they're unable to continue their insurance without it.
Is that the new house we put in just before you turn left to go on the.
Yes, sir.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I move that we approve task orders number twenty-three dash zero-four, that's stated in the agenda.
Got a motion for us to go ahead and approve that?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, let's go ahead and move on. I, consider an act upon whether to proceed with issuing a request or proposal for building inspection services, Matt.
So counsel, the last meeting, uh, we were tasked with giving options for the city for additional building inspections, plumbing inspections, item like that. So legal has worked up this request for proposal you see before you tonight, um, that we can issue out and ask for proposals back from different firms. I can tell you, I'm already, after that meeting, somebody notified somebody somewhere, because I've already had phone calls from firms that do turnkey, just like what we were talking about. Asking us when we're gonna get this out, they wanna give us a proposal, they wanna move forward with it. So I don't know if somebody in the crowd reached out or they saw it online, because I think they hit every city email.
Yeah, yeah.
With information. I don't know if y'all guys, but it was from a, a company out of San Antonio. But this is what you have before you tonight. We've still gotta get some more data in it. I got it from Jesse.
Today?
Yeah, today, a little later today, three, three-thirty. I reviewed most of it, made some minor corrections as far as, you know, our mailing address, stuff like that, and I gotta work with, uh, when we wanna issue it, once I get this data from the building permit.
Straight forward, Jesse?
It's pretty straightforward.
My only question, I'll work with Jesse, there's some stuff, it talks about the fire code, even though we have our own, and we'll work through that because we do all of our own inspections, plans, review, everything. But we wanna have the ability that if it's a large project, because the way it's adopted, if it is a large project, our local fire marshal can say, hey, this is larger than we can handle, we wanna outsource it, and a hundred percent of that cost is the permitting fee. So, this, if we do a turnkey company, they would have all those inspections.
And where you would have that is if you have a big distribution center, you're gonna need, say, it's gonna cost thousands of dollars to review plans and.
Amazon warehouse where it deals here. We would probably wanna outsource that because it would take so much time.
We would have to do anyway now because it's just the complexity of it.
And it would be to have a, a resource available to the city, uh, for example. It would also coordinate with TRC, they do some of the substantial plating and construction plan review as well, so be coordinating with some of the existing people, the in-house, fire marshal, TRC, the city staff, obviously, for all the permitting that they have, they show all those things. But it's just a matter of having, um, rather than have right now sort of divide it up between building inspection and plumbing inspection, so rather than have two, you move, then have one available to do that, and then you could parse, parcel that as you needed to, based on the work.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
A move that we proceed with issuing a request or proposals for building inspection services.
Got a motion on Paul? Okay, got a second? Any further discussion?
That's our meeting fee is based on the overall cost of the budget?
Well, we'll have to see, there's different options, that's what the, this is saying, they need to tell us what their fee schedule's gonna be, whether it's per hour, per inspection, a percentage of the inspection, but we'll work through that. And it's, the one gentleman that called me to talk to me about it said the same thing, they've got several options they could use.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, it depends on how it falls, we could have to come back and ask to increase our inspection fees.
That's.
I bet you.
But I can tell you, every body out there, we're still waiting.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, appreciate that. All right, let's go ahead and move on, uh, doing good. Let's go ahead and move on to department head reports. So, animal care control, Santi, come on up. So this is a reminder, as he's getting set up, counsel, this is what we'll be doing. First meeting, we'll have the four departments do this, and then on the second meeting, we'll actually have the, uh, city hall folks. Where we can kinda, uh, lengthen or shorten the time periods on there. And it lines up, usually they do a pretty good job of getting the briefings already by the beginning of the month. That's good.
That's a peek up.
Oh, you brought.
Yeah, did, did. So is that, you have to scroll down? Yeah. Yeah, the eight call, eighty-five calls for service, we set five traps, fifteen miscellaneous, we had nine surrenders. Took, we transferred twenty, uh, picked up nineteen for the month of March, our count's right now at forty, and fourteen cats. Transferred the rescue, had six dogs to Burning Animal Control, um, two dogs to Humane Society San Antonio on the fourteenth, and then twelve dogs to Humane, this, Humane Society San Antonio, two on the twenty-eighth. Had, uh, ten volunteers, total of eighty-five and a half hours. As of March, as of March of, I don't know if y'all noticed, but I forgot to put, we euthanized two animals back in January. Uh, when I was doing it, it stamped on me that I didn't add it on there, so we didn't euthanize two in March, it was actually in January, uh, of this year. Had seven adopted and sixty-seven total transferred to rescues. Uh, eighty-four pet owners come for food, uh, four new people, that was from the Abbot's County area. Had nineteen from Abbot's, six from Castleville, ten from Devine, two from Honda, seventeen in Talia, twenty-five from Lio, two from Okeechre, and three from Somerset, three come from Somerset.
So, can I ask you a question of the bell's plan here? It's just 'cause I don't know how it works, I don't know that we do this food every month.
Yes, sir.
Does the city buy any of that food, or is it all?
It's all donated, all donations. It, we get it from, uh, San Antonio Humane Society. When they get, uh, truckloads, they kinda just, like, either it's, they'll pick me to pick up the food, or pick, contact Honda or Medina County, uh, they just go around picking.
Santi does a great job of being able to work with them and get us the food, and sometimes he take advantage when he gets a call of others that, that are not, they don't take the food, and they said, hey, Lio, do you want it?
Yeah.
And, and Santi with his new truck and the big trailer, whoa.
I can.
Drive over there and come back with a full trailer, but it's all, it's provided to us.
It's all donated.
How, how many city employees work during that time?
Uh, just me and the mayor and Betty Kroger. It's a huge, D S three that, uh, we do employees working, but they're not doing, it's the employees' normal day to work.
Yeah. So, I will, I will add, so Animal Allies also helps out with this. Sometimes we're running low, like, um, cat food or certain type of dog food or something, so they'll go out and buy to kinda off, make sure that we're balanced out, is that correct, Santi?
Especially on cat food, because that's what mainly we run out first.
So we do get donations from our local nonprofits.
Uh, our March financial review. And our indoor art sale raised seventeen ninety-eight. It was, it was very trendy, a lot of people, all over comes for us. And a big thank to my volunteers and who helped me out, I kinda done nothing without coming in and help setting up during that week of, uh, setting tables down and putting each item on the, on the table, so it helped out.
And did good, they did, and you were able to get somebody whatever was left over, right?
Yep. And then that's gonna be your trip design. Um, I have to have an appointment on Wednesday, to get in, to take it in Wednesday, and then by the end of the day, it should be done, so it's.
Okay, the number that is on there, is that the office or is that the on-call?
That's the office number, the facility number.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's what it'll look like when I get it back home Wednesday.
And the recording that the facility does have, you have all call number, correct?
Yes. Oh, no, it's, it's just a basic, I don't know, I haven't really.
If we can basically just say, we're not available, city emergency, please call us at.
Yes, I'll, I'll work on that, which is the way they got it.
Yeah, we just add, because if they see, we wanna make sure we make it easy.
Something with that logo on the side of the truck on the door, what does that say? I'm zooming in on it, it says Animal Control and Control on this thing.
Uh, on the.
On the door.
The patch's line?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's our, our animal care, it's our, uh, patch's line.
Yeah, well, what I'm seeing on here is it says Animal Control and Control, that's a little crazy. It shouldn't be Animal Care and Control. Yeah, I'll just, uh, proof that before that gets.
Yeah, they, they, yeah, they said one picture one of the patch's line on it. So, but yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I can zoom in on the door.
He might've, they might've killed it this.
This repeats, Animal Control and Control.
Should be Care, Animal Care. Animal Care and Control.
Yeah, Animal Control and Control. Yeah, it's put the same word twice.
Yeah, Animal Care, yeah, they put Control, I guess.
Probably doing dumb work.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll have to email them tonight to, they could figure that. That's what it'll look like after Wednesday.
So Santi, great job on the, on the fundraising and getting this and getting the stuff over there. But we are getting close to a year from the time that we started with trying to get our numbers down.
Yes.
So, I think be prepared for the next meeting that we have, we probably need to have a solid plan and how we're gonna be able to bring those numbers down to what the facility is capable of.
Yes.
Okay? Because we're still, we're still way up high on the numbers, and we need to bring them down. Okay, so.
So just people bringing their, their animal?
Uh, it's just, they're both, same, same story, uh, they found it in the city.
Are the, are the nice surrenders you had, or those people that gave money, or those that, they said they found them in the city? The ones you had last month?
I think there were ones that brought, were brought, found in the city and brought in.
Are we still calling the police?
Yeah, yes, if they, you said, call police if they don't wanna pay the surrender.
Yeah, if they don't pay the surrender.
Most of them pay, and I bring up the money.
Then that's an animal surrender, that they're surrendering their personal animal to the city. It's not, it's not a. And it's far not, if you're willing to pay that twenty-dollar fee, that tells me it was probably your animal that you brought to our facility, not a stray you found.
Those that were surrendering their pet.
Well, that'd be found.
If they're willing to pay the twenty dollars, it's probably their pet.
Well, you got some people that do find stuff. A lot of stroke difficult animals are A T B. And you do have some animal people that they'll easily pay twenty or forty bucks to get it to the facility. But the deal is, there is a big problem with people telling the truth.
We can't require them to have, like, a utility bill to prove their residency?
Yeah, that's how it is in San Antonio. If you don't live within the city or have a bill for the city, they don't accept it. Um, that's how San Antonio, San Antonio Humane Society works and A T B works, too.
If that's the policy, the council, I think it's always been open
Yeah.
to if you, if you say you found your Roman in the city, we just took it. If the council wants to change that to, no, we're not gonna take an animal from you unless you physically reside in the city, whether it's a surrender or you found your money, that's.
I mean, we have an issue with public population, right, at our facility, so. I hate to be turning people away, but our taxpayers don't want us to put them in the bill. They're creating additional work for you, so maybe it's something to add in the future, uh, agenda.
Yeah, because I get calls from outside the city to, oh, uh, my, oh, you don't service, what can I bring it in? Like, no, well, I have someone that lives in the city, my, you know, like, we had one, um, she lives outside Lio, but had her son-in-law live here in the city, and was gonna give her some of all the dogs, so she, he, so he surrendered to us, but we told her, no, she, she couldn't do that, so.
I just stand. But we appreciate everything that you're doing, Santi.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, but it just.
Yeah, but we gotta come up with a plan, so if we need to get more of the transfers involved, so we can get, and I know you've been working on it, but in February, we didn't have any transfer.
No, yeah, no, yeah.
So, we need to come up with a plan.
These appointments that I had, the appointments I had in March, and in April, I set back in December of last year for these appointments for San Antonio. So, yeah, definitely, uh, we're gonna work on that.
So, we'll, we'll get with you, but I'll be prepared for, for next month.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll be at one. Counsel? Thank you, appreciate that. All right. Cassandra, library.
Turn it on, it's a little. Give me a little chip.
Anything, no?
Oh.
I think, well, she's gotta go, fuck is it, right?
All right, so, our experience is, we did about the same eighty-nine and eighty-three. Uh, our checkouts did go up one thousand five hundred and sixty-four. The users only went up one, but it's still, they're getting checked out, and people are learning more about it. It's, it's been a little day. Uh, we had nine new accounts and thirty-one account renewals, and it all had eighteen record cards. And we're still doing story time, uh, we had ten kids, but during the week, it's during. And we're still working on this, speaking of longer than the answer, hopefully we'll have them by the end of the year. And we're still offering firm site services. We do have more people starting to learn about them. Uh, some people who have little ones, they don't wanna, if it's raining or it's cold, and they wanna get them out, they just order their books and they just knocks their car. And these are our displays for last month. Uh, it was Women's History Month, Bar, uh, National Market Day, and it goes Craft Month, and then Texas History Month. And of course, we did, uh, Dr. Schuss, and then it was, uh, Irish-American heritage. And I guess it's still a little section, hopefully we'll have them by the end of the year, it's taking a little bit longer. The only thing we have left really is the adult nonfiction, and so I take about fifty books at a time to Joe, and she peels all the labels off, and then, uh, goes back to April, and April reprints everything, they go back to Joe, so she's pretty, it's just back and forth. But that's about it.
Because they posted yesterday, yes?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yesterday, on a birthday. How'd it go on the spring break? Did you see any influx of?
Yeah, there must be a lot of people coming, and it wasn't a whole lot, but it must be a lot of people. Yeah, it's just, I think, um, it's slowly coming back up. But we are, we are planning on having the golf event in June. I'm just waiting for that guy to, to give us a call back. Uh, he's gonna do, uh, an indoor eighteen-hole, uh, in, in golf course, in life. We did it last year, but I think we, I didn't get here all the time, because we were, it was up in the air whether we were gonna do it or not, and we finally, uh, we're just waiting for him to call us back, because he comes all the way from, I don't know, the M states, way up north, Maine, Maryland's along, and, and he does a lot of different places around, uh, the state, and then he'll pick up the little libraries along there.
Awesome, awesome.
Well, I'll let y'all know.
Please, please do.
So much.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Cassandra. Anything? Okay. Okay. Here we go, public works. James.
Good evening, everyone. Last month, we installed five new meters, replaced two meters. And then we found nine leaks that belonged to the customer on rereads and gas and waterway at thirty-two. Two of them were requested by a customer and the city requested thirty. Sewer stoppages, we had one and we found one that belonged to the customer. Finals, we had fifteen new. Customers, eighteen. We did have cutoff list last month and miscellaneous work orders was fourteen. It's kind of a chart. We also found some of our rereads we were talking about over the months. Something wrong when we get a new customer. And when the ladies would write up the work order, they'd put reread. You know, water, but now we're doing final and new instead of reread.
Break it up.
Clarify a little bit.
Yeah, that's good.
There's our monthly man hours. Installation was eighty, water maintenance, one hundred and sixty-five, sewer fifty-three. Sewer plant maintenance, one hundred and seventy-five, reading meter, sixty-four hours, and reread sixteen. Locates sixty-six. Burn and brush fifty-three miscellaneous eighty-eight for a total of seven hundred and sixty. And there's a little chart on, on that. Water usage. Of course, we start off with seven hundred and eighty-five at the beginning of the year. Our reduction is sixty-seven point seventy-five acre feet. So we have seven hundred and seventeen point twenty-five acre feet. And we've used one hundred and fifteen as of the end of March.
Nice.
And that's our thirty-five percent cutback for ninety days. We've got a reduction of eight point six three percent. Chart on there.
We're what, one, two, three, four, so we're a quarter?
Yeah.
One quarter.
First quarter. If we only go one per quarter, we'll, we'll be okay.
Well, summer is the one where it gets busy, right? So hopefully we get, we start getting some more rain, it'll be, it'll be a lot better for us, yeah. All right.
We finished McCoy Road. Well, we didn't finish, we filled McCoy Road that eight hundred feet of eight inch, six inch. We filled it with water today. It's highly chlorinated, so we'll probably flush it tomorrow and then take samples in a day or two.
Good. Take care of that resident.
Yeah, there'll be, I think there'll be three meters on that line.
Three meters? Awesome.
Wasn't even there, so I'm working out where. So the meters we, we.
The radio read meters?
Yeah. We're not pretty, we're not pretty good. We don't have to get off the truck anymore.
Well, we haven't, I guess we haven't had time, you know. We haven't been working. We have. I mean, we got, you know, over three hundred radio reads. But I mean, they've been working out all right. We have two of them that haven't worked within two, three months.
Out of three hundred radio reads, we only have two that are giving me problems right now. And James fixed it. We'll see if they work. We don't have any rereads on radio reads, and so I'm very happy with them.
We replaced those two meters.
James, I saw you knee-deep in muddy the other day down here at the little pedestrian bridge. Did you get that leak fixed? What'd you find in there?
We replaced service line. It was, apparently when they did it, they tapped it almost straight up and they ran that line, the service line up. And I guess over the years, it pushed down and it kinked it. And we couldn't get a clamp. We worked, what, about four hours on that? Trying to get different clamps and it was kinked so bad, we couldn't. So we ended up just replacing the whole service line. We had to cut out a bunch of concrete.
This is, this will be a little bit better for us too, because we do have a drop-off with the school buses, so the kids will be able to use. Once we clear it out, you know, they'll be able to go through there.
Yeah, I just had to drive a bus. I saw digging and mud flying everywhere. I just wondered how that went.
It's a great thing. It's a great thing for that area.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's good. Anybody else? Thanks, James.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Council, if I may, I want to give kudos to James and them. They did that repair without their, their right-hand man they normally use for all their water repairs. And his other guy stepped up. And they were down in that hole. Typically, when, when I see water leaks, they're not the ones actually be working. So the experience his guys got that day was tremendous for the city to do that. They, they worked harder than that one.
And that's a good one, too. All right. Richie. He's got something to drink.
Five minutes on this.
Sorry.
Take care of vocals.
Simmer down our work. Gotta tell you, gotta figure out how to work this first. Okay. There we go. These numbers aren't, don't vary much. Again, eight vehicle collisions for all the cars in this town. Don't ask me how. We only had six on public roadway last month. Alarms again for all the businesses we've got. Residents is not, not hardly getting any, no residential alarms. Made one today out in Lake Shore, so we'll have at least one for next month. Business checks, building checks. A lot of citations last month. And you know, a lot, mostly speeding, two hundred and fifty-two for speeding, ninety-nine for driver's license related. Little bit of everything there. Forty-one stop sign, red light. Lot of few citations. The guys stay pretty darn busy out there. I think by any standards, those are, those are, you know, significant amount of activity. I don't really pay much attention to what other departments around us do, but I don't think you'd find anywhere near like that. It's amazing what people do when they have a good leader. Racing profile and data, we got, threw that in there.
Didn't want to stay awake for a little bit.
All the racing profile stuff. Lot of arrests, little bit of everything on there, you know. A lot of D, getting a lot more DWI's, a little bit of everything, warrants. Same stuff. Really, that had very much through all the years of being here. In twenty-three and a half years, it's all about the same stuff. No juvenile stuff, no identity theft stuff, had a little mail fraud deal. Uh, burglaries, peace, old beef PC, beef really broke in, Pirates Cove, took four hundred dollars cash.
Really?
Yeah, we had a lot of one-stop. That is a mini warehouse. Criminal mischief. Oh, somebody hit the wall, drove into the wall down at Naomi's down on Main Street. Trophy Buck, Medina County chased a car through Trophy Buck's front over there and it run through the AT&T junction box one morning or evening. Last one, had a little graffiti in the restroom, right after the big festival. So at least they waited till after the festival, so that was. Man, let's see. Third Street, somebody took a box of screws, you know. They had ordered them on, ordered them on Amazon. And, you know, I guess somebody horse-pired, you know, I guess they get home and look at all these, look at all these, we got, you know, man, they really. Ten dollars for screws. That's not very many, because you know, I buy those deck things and I think of those deck screws like that's about forty bucks or something. So it probably wasn't but handful. iPhone wallet. We did have shoplift hardware. That was a good little case there. Our boy came in, sat down three thousand dollars one morning in a plastic Ziploc bag and left it there by accident. And got home and David, luckily Sergeant Lopez and Corporal Robinson, they you know, used some techniques there, figured out where the guy, figured out who the guy was. They went over there into his house and he had twenty-seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars of it still left. So the guy, he was out a couple hundred bucks. He asked me, what do you think? I'll do, I'll be thankful you got twenty-seven fifty-nine back and chop the rest off to be more careful with your money. He's not like that's proud of it. But anyway, they got the shoplift there at HEB. We have a lot of little stuff there. And then the end of March, brush country, they hit a, hit them over there for a catalytic converter. We hadn't seen one of those in a while, but that's kind of nice. But, you know, we're missing those. Lost property. We always get all that stuff, you know. Phone, phones. That's where we release stuff to people, so this we found. Of course. Again, a lot of escorts. School picnic right before spring break. I always remember spring break picnic, because one of those was the one right before COVID hit. And I remember it always being thinking we had, right there, thinking we back in weeks. We'll be back in like six months, so. Powerlifting. David did a, there's a three-week class called Leadership in Texas Law Enforcement. It's one of our correct prerequisites under our job descriptions to a whole supervisory position. So fortunately, wherever we get David in that, there'd be Bernie. It's three weeks, but then break it up. So I think in a couple of weeks, he'll go again. Matt went through it. David frankly through it. Gordon, damn goodness. So we always have, it's a really a good program. Out there at the BFW as another escort. Oh, Bailey Brand, that's a little shop on Main Street, fire marshal stuff. Oh, we're at a construction meeting on that new truck stop. Pickleball factory, pickleball distribution center, I guess would be the correct terminology. We did a walkthrough down there. Little flower shop. Let me see. Insurance, little insurance deal. And it's for Tigger up for the stripes. Now, it took us about four or five to get to that stripes file, but we did finally get there on three twenty-nine. I've been in it since day one. It's a wonderfully super nice facility. I took some pictures. The menu boards were up. And it's all like cat dish. You get like macaroni and cheese. I mean, it's really nice to go over there and check it out. Anyway, let's see, they got.
That's all the violations. We've got pictures of that meeting.
They got the chicken stuff over here. And then they got the taco stuff. It's, it's nice. I mean, that place is nice. It's nice. That's all.
You moving your desk over there, Richie?
I'm probably, there's gonna be a lot of activity over there. I'm gonna be right on top of it. The Asco's County, so cases, we filed nine, nine, nine misdemeanor cases on nine people. And felonies, we filed actually four, four cases on four Asco's. We had two misdemeanors filed with the Medina County Criminal District Attorney's Office. Two people, two misdemeanors. And they're real advanced over there in Medina County. It's all electronic files. So you don't have to mail stuff and take paper. It's all done through a pretty neat program like they have in Barrett County. So it's, it's pretty cool. If we get our other county where we have most of our cases to do that, it'd make, man, be really nice. Nothing in Barrett County, pray to God. Hundred and fifty-four hours overtime. We had on some personally at that time. No vacation. We do have, what we have going up right now. Oh, we had nineteen hours. Beatrice, who helps in the office, she was actually on vacation in California for a couple of weeks. So you can see the gap there. Reserve officers, nothing there really worked out. So what else is going on? Still waiting for an update on vehicles. I did talk to the guy recently. You know, I think we're probably gonna get our first vehicle maybe in July. Now, I think we'll probably get our second vehicle till probably October, November. So that's where we stand on those. That's very frustrating, but that's just what we're into. Hiring process, you know, we had two openings. We've been doing very well on that. We possibly will have someone in if everything goes well again before, right before May, first of May. And then the other guy, another, it's gonna be delayed. It's gonna be running a little longer. It's gonna take, I've got a polygraph set up for next week and a physical drug screen. And then that guy has to get notice once we get in where we need him, you know. So he'll probably be, he could be mid-May if we're lucky. As if nobody backs out, nobody offers him more money between now and then. That's kind of the road, how it works, you know. They're, you know, stealing people left and right. And when it gets down to somebody starting to, it's common. When it gets down to saying, put in their two weeks' notice, they get an offer, they get a bump in salary to stay. So we're hoping we can get full staff without having to deal with that. So if I decide to leave, I'm gonna maybe think about giving me a bump. If I was interested in money, I'd find a different career field. We had a little, we had, we found a body. A man passed away working over in Saddle Ridge today. I guess he went in Friday night to do some painting and probably had a heart attack. So we, some contractors, supervisor found a body today. So it's kind of a sad deal. Anyway, that was kind of, that took a lot of time today on that.
No one reported him missing before they found him this morning?
A lot of these people, they come from other countries. Their families are pretty spread out. And, you know, it just, it's not like, I would like to think something my wife would say. If I come over and work for like two or three days, I'd like to think my wife would like, you know, call them there and say. But, you know, anyway, that's, so that was a sad deal. It's always sad, you know, because that guy always had family. And Corporal Robinson, you know, had to make some notifications to some family members. And that's a tough deal. If you haven't had to do that. It's always tough, you know. Anyway. Any questions on anything? We're, we're, I mean, everything's going fairly well. I don't have any, any issues. We went back and went to the police chief's conference and everything was fine up there with the exception of eleven fifty-nine, it was time for lunch. And they got this big, big dining room. We were going, leaving, going up there. Everybody, get out, get out, get out, get out. Well, mercy, everybody mercy that. We talked about five hundred police chiefs and cops get out to mercy. Everyone's like, well, hey, mercy is what we do. Why are you telling, why are we gonna get out? Well, somebody called in, some, some military called in a bomb threat, you know. And not only, I would have been against it, somebody would know like the cops. But, but could you not do it right at lunchtime? I mean, how depressing was that, you know?
And that would really hurt you though.
Well, yeah, they did. So we waited outside for a while and then.
Where'd y'all sit outside? What do you mean? Y'all sat somewhere outside.
Outside, there's just three big trash bags pulled. I'm sorry, Charles, you're mad at me here. But you know what? You're getting this because, you know.
Catch you on the street, man.
So anyway, to make a long story short, we go out, we're right by these bags. I said, David, maybe we shouldn't be here. What's in them bags? I don't know. So we moved away. Make a long story short, we got back. Lunch was a little colder than normal, but you know, everything was fine.
They caught a bomb threat and you saw bags?
Well, we saw these bags. We just sat next to them outside. And I said, David, maybe there's something in there. So, you know, we don't have a lot of good sense. We're thinking about lunch. I'm sorry, I, I ramble on, but you know, what, is anything I can answer any question? We can, we can take a short break. I can reconvene. I can talk some more. I can dance. I make up folk songs.
How did your Easter photo turn out?
Charles took an Easter photo of my family. Thank you for bringing it out.
Hey, where's my money?
Well. That's what you, that's what you do for constituent services. My wife says, hopefully some, we're coming back from church. My wife says, maybe we can find somebody on the street, take our picture. And it's like we pulled in, it's like, God, and then outside I see Charles walking up the street. There you go. Thank you, Charles. Sorry for rambling on, but you know.
All right, continue on. Number eight, and this is the executive session. The city council, city of Lido may convene an executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one, one A and two. Consult with an attorney to discuss and consider the following items. A, update report of the city condition. This will be a short, oh, yeah, short update that we actually have. So Lynette, if you can please show us going into closed session nine twenty-three. Council, if you can please meet me, meet us in the back.
You want me to come back to report mayor?
Yes, yes, so you can go ahead and tell her.
Are they gonna be in there for a while?
Are you pulling turn music on?
No.
I'll have to turn it on when it's not. It's better than last month. We went to twelve minutes this time. Last night you had fourteen minutes.
I want to make a general quick word. Director reports are no longer than four minutes.
Yes, exactly.
I want to make a request. We actually have directors.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm worthless.
But I think I'm a good time. I'm a better dad than I am. I got to try my own form.
Are they gonna paint in here? Put in there?
They have time to sit there?
Paint this, like, that very little blue. Are you okay? I'll make sure you're okay.
No, 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 I can live with that.
All right, if you can show us, nine twenty-five, back, no action taken. Appreciate that, okay? And this is a reminder, just to follow the agenda reminder, the B item was taken care of earlier right after the citizens' ballot, so we're complete with that section. Let's go ahead and move on to the last one, this is at nine, and this is the informational items, so let's go. Anything, Charles? Go back around the room, Richie? Any other good story to tell?
We got lots of stories.
James?
We got a hundred and nine supplies for water meters out there in Saddle Ridge today, so.
Two hundred?
I don't know, I don't know when they're gonna start putting them in, they gave us the parts that we need.
They're, they're moving really quick, it's not a ramp as far as trying to build these homes, so we'll see.
That'll be good, okay? Back over here, anything, Sergeant V F F, anything?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Sandra?
I forgot to mention that I will be out next week, I'm leaving Tuesday for a conference in Austin for library conference.
Oh, nice.
I'll be gone Tuesday through Friday.
Good, those are always good conferences.
That's where I give my continuing ed there, too, so.
Awesome. Santi? Anything?
The Key Plateau Beautiful Committee is planning to do their, walk the streets and clean them up on Sunday that we do our big trash dumpster, I believe that's September ninth, or nine?
May ninth, right, May ninth. May sixth, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, Saturday, May sixth, I believe it is, yeah.
May sixth, I'm sorry, May sixth.
So if anybody knows any service organization that needs to get volunteer hours, that would be a good opportunity to do that, the Key Plateau Beautiful Committee is supposed to be contacting the applicable people at the high school to see about the honor societies and any other group of those that need hours. Have they gotten with you yet about advertisements on the sign?
No, I've gotten nothing from them, we've got the approval from the school for the dumpsters to be placed, then we're good to go there.
All right, good. I'll, I'll call Chris, who's supposed to get with you, I'll call Chris.
Oh, wait, wait. Let me check how you say that, I don't think so, but, let me check, maybe, hang on.
Yeah, if he, if he doesn't get it to you, I will get it to you.
We're gonna get as early as possible for the kids, if you're asking.
I'll check right.
What time is that starting, what's due?
Uh, it's nine o'clock. Nine to two, nine, nine to one, I think it is, nine to one.
And we'll do the same thing, the dumpsters, same time have people walk?
Yeah, right, and we'll have a table set up out here to pick up the vest, and then we'll pick up handles and bags and things like that, and one big dumpster here, three over the school, and it's a good chance to get the city cleaned up.
Just bring, bring gloves.
Yeah, and we'd, we'd love to see anybody from the city here, come on out and pick up a little trash.
Anything else? Thank you, thank you, good reminder, definitely a good reminder. Okay, so some reminders and some comments, just want to pass on, council, please help us out, Public Works is looking to hiring, so we have an opportunity to be able to appeal, so if you know of anybody, please work with James, work with Matt, so we can go ahead and take care of that. Want to say special thanks to Public Works, I know not only with, with that one, but a few other things that have popped up, and especially after hours stepping up and helping us out, whether it's getting something fixed, something looked at, or maybe working an event, so we really appreciate it, James, thanks for doing all that. We appreciate it. Want to say thanks once again to Lynette for all the hard work on the audit, that worked out really good, so it's gonna be a lot easier for us to be able to take care of that in the future. Santi, kudos to you on the yard sale and getting all that thing here, definitely a good thing to do. Great, thanks, thanks for a great Easter egg hunt, that worked out really good, city hall, Paula, Lynette, Matt, everybody was involved, Public Works, Parks, BFW, Auxiliary, Fire Department, Boy Scouts, and the National Honor Society, and there's probably a few other volunteers who were part of that, but a lot of feedback, everybody gave us a lot of kudos. Total of how many, Lynette, that was twenty thousand eggs?
I think it was like twenty-three, well, over twenty-three thousand, I think, we said.
Yeah, so, I mean, the kids were, kids were excited, the bunny did a great job, tell, tell the bunny that she's contracted, I mean, she did a really good job with the kids, it worked out really good, so a lot of kudos on that. Represented the city very well. Congrats, I want to let you know, I know I gave a heads up, a heads up at Snell official, our former commander here, VFW commander, Larry Sanders, has actually been named as a state VFW commander, so he'll be taking over in June, so there'll be a homecoming, that's what they call it, it'll be in, in June timeframe, he'll probably be in San Antonio, but in case you run into him or you hear about him, one of our own here is gonna be the state commander for the whole VFW, so that's, that's pretty big, so, and we'll probably do something, we'll probably do some sort of recognition here with the council, too. Remind you that we have the seniors meal on the twentieth of April, so next week, so please, if you have any, get them to talk to Paula for registration, getting everything set up, but we should have a pretty good, on that day. We have the community outreach event happening on the same day, we're doing everything that we did last time with all the programs with WIC and assistance and all that, and plus, we're bringing Methodist healthcare, they're gonna be doing some health screening, which is awesome, and we got ACOG committed on this one for them to come in and, and help us out with, with weatherization programs, senior citizen programs, financially assisted programs, yeah, so that's gonna be pretty good. And there's a good probability, they're supposed to let me know tomorrow, that they might actually have somebody that might be giving shots for the elderly, too, you know, the flu and the flu, the other ones that are out there, the boosters and all that. June is where we're gonna concentrate with the kids, we're gonna have June set up for, for vaccination for kids, and this is for all those in certain grades, I think it's that seventh grade that they need to have their shots? There's certain windows in schools that they have to have their shots, and if not, they don't, they're not allowed to register, so we're gonna do it in June, so all the parents can come, it'll be for free, get their shots, they can go ahead and be ready to register instead of running around trying to catch a doctor or somewhere to get their shots, so that'll be in June, so a lot of stuff going on. Also want to thank Santi, and also give the council, if you saw the notice, we have the second case of rabies. Great job getting their stuff out here, this is with skunks, okay? Luckily, so far the dogs have been good, right, Santi?
Yes, this, this last one, the dog was cursed, so we just got a booster and confined for forty-five days.
Oh, forty-five days?
He's not even confined.
Oh, I thought it was less than that. Forty-five days, okay, that's good to know. Yeah, and Santi, he said that it was, the skunk was, was acting your...
No, the gentleman said the dog just killed it, I guess it ran under the house, he brought it to me, it was a bunch of dirt and mothballs, so I'm guessing it's like it went under the house.
So it was a previous one, the one that was...
Yes.
Walking around real weird and all that, okay, got it. So this is our second one in here, we've been very fortunate, by the way, our local health authority is involved in all this, every time we have something, we report it, so as long as we can keep it, you know, between the M, we should be okay, but, just so you'll know, be careful with the skunks, and they have a high probability of carrying rabies. Tech Stot, they, they came through in the last minute, we thought they weren't, opened up the two lanes, we're still working on the other lane, there's, they're waiting for the contractor to pour some more concrete, and then they'll flip on the Bill Miller's side, they'll flip to the lane that is closest to the businesses, so they're still doing that, and then thirty-one seventy-five they'll be working. We'll keep you updated on that, but that should be happening hopefully here by next week. Next meeting in the very beginning, we're gonna be a little bit busy, we have the boys and the girls' basketball teams getting recognized, so we're gonna get them all, the boys were supposed to come tonight, but they canceled because it was a day off, so they asked if they could put them, so it's gonna be pretty busy, so just bear with us, but we'll take care of them. Please go out and catch our boys' baseball and the girls' softball teams, they're doing really, really good. The boys, both of them are doing great, but what I'm really impressed with the boys is they're all freshmen and sophomores, the majority of them, and they're doing really good. That's a good sign with our teams that we have, so, also with track, with the track meets that are going on, please go out there and support them, I have not heard anything, but I know our tennis team went to regionals today, so hopefully something good turned out of that, as soon as we hear something, we'll let you know. Any last minute? Anything at all? Okay, and we got nine thirty-five right now, got a motion for us to go ahead and adjourn?
I'll move with adjournment.
Okay, got a motion? Got a second? All those in favor? Any opposed?